All right, welcome everybody to the March 21st Board of Selectmen meeting, SOA Commission meeting. Everyone's here except Ms. Bonson. Public comment, anybody have anything they want to say?
Table, can we have another mic for the table?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert Chisholm, I live at 91 Hillside Village Drive, I am the Council on Aging Liaison to the FIS committee. Several weeks ago, the selectmen held hearings on the proposal to terminate the lease and move the COA senior center operation to a temporary location for the period May 1st until the new senior center is opened in the spring of 2019. This move was to accommodate our landlord on Hartwell Street who was planning a major construction project there. This caused quite a furor, both publicly and privately, amongst the seniors who were protesting this dislocation, myself included. It appears that when our concerns were brought to the attention of the board, you were listening, at the March 5th COA meeting, it was reported that some of the more salient concerns had been addressed and resolved. Collectively, you should be applauded for creating a win-win-win-win-win situation. One, the seniors will be moving into a $5.7 million senior setting next spring. Two, the congregational church will be receiving substantial additional income from allowing the senior center to take up temporary quarters there at no cost to the town. Three, the town will benefit by having approximately $4 million worth of new construction on the tax rolls in the future. Four, the town will also be relieved of payment of rent in the amount of about $30,000 during this transition period. Five, and furthermore, the landlord of the current site has agreed to contribute $30,000 toward the new senior center. Yes, during the transition, there will be some severe disruption to senior center programs and activities, but in its totality, that is a relatively small price to pay. As a matter of fact, it might even be a blessing if it prompts more volunteers to step forward and help out during this difficult time. You and your board have my gratitude. In my opinion, you should be congratulated for a job, very well done. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Anybody else have anything to say? Thank you. All right, approval of minute, meeting minutes, March 1st, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
March 1st, 2018, executive session.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
March 7th, 2018, regular session.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
March 7th, 2018, executive session.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
March 14th, 2018, the regular session.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, warrants, Pat.
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants as printed in the agenda.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Should've read them before we went right to the public hearing.
That's right. Bill, one minute.
One more minute.
Okay. All right, shall we?
Yep. Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirement of general bylaw of the Town Office of Spilston, Article 23, public hearing and the notice that the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, March 21st, 2018, at 7:15 PM for the purpose of considering amendments to the policy K-2, the lowering of the United States flag flying to half-staff over municipal properties. The meeting will be held in the selectmen's meeting room of the Town Office located in 140 West Spilston, 140 Worcester Street, West Spilston. For additional information or to review the proposed information, please contact the Office of the Board of Selectmen Town Administrator at 774-261-4012. John Hadley, Chairman.
All right, do you have any discussion? Nancy, what's the changes?
I think it was the board wanted to discuss the policy as a whole.
See if you may want to make any changes in.
Yes.
I mean, I looked it over and I can recall the last time we talked about this. I don't really foresee any issues with the policy. I think it spells out what flags go half-staff for what groups. Some things I don't think we remembered that, you know, each flag is for a different, you know, a different group the flag would be lowered. So, I don't see any issue. I think everything is spelled out in the policy.
I think it was resonant. I don't know if there was town, what flag to half-staff or if someone had died in town. He was upset because it was not a decree from the Governor or the President, but I think our policy is very clear what we can and what we cannot do.
I was going to chime in with bullet point number three. I'll just read it so the public knows what it says. It says, "The United States flag will be lowered to half-staff for any other person not listed in this policy other than for individuals," I'm sorry, "will not be lowered to half-staff for any other purpose not listed in this policy other than for individuals who, in the opinion of the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, have contributed significantly to the betterment and welfare of the town." So, if it's brought to the attention of this board that somebody in town died, that we as a board, more specifically the Chairman of the board feels is deserving of having the flag lowered to half-mast, our policy is that it can be lowered to half-mast. And some people may have been upset that it wasn't declared by the Governor. I go the opposite. If there's any resident out there that feels that there's somebody that had a significant impact on this town but doesn't meet the designations of any one of the items in this policy, please reach out to the Board of Selectmen's office to let us know so that, you know, if somebody gave significant amounts of their time to us, they should be honored with the flag being lowered to half-staff. Sometimes somebody will pass away and we may not hear it.
Just to clarify that portion, so, I mean, just for instance, for the public, you know, Town Hall employees is 140 Worcester Street, then it goes on, Water District employees are the flag at their office, and then it goes on to all the other groups. That one, that significant other person, what flag would be lowered for that one?
The United States flag on.
The Common?
Yes, the United States flag is the one on the Common. Is addressed to that.
That would go, that would go, that one would be, that would be the same. What other, I can't find Common. Does anybody else see that? What groups fall under the flag at the Common or is it somewhere else?
That's one through, the first one is at the...
Yeah, okay, so that, it's not listed below. That's on and above that.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I don't think there's any, I think the passport that wrote this did a great job.
We actually have one of the gentlemen who served on the Bishop Committee here this evening.
You're gonna have to speak louder if you want me to...
Well, public comments.
I'm gonna stand young man on the end.
If you can, come up, sir.
Anything from the public that want to talk? Come on up.
My name is Bill Martin, and I was on the original flag half-staff duty. Now, that was 18 years ago, actually 19 years ago. So, I actually could not hear. What is the proposal that...
We are not changing anything.
No, we don't foresee any issues with the policy.
It's worked well for 18 years, 19 years.
I agree.
It was brought in front of us because one person, someone, no, I'm just saying, so somebody complained about it. They thought we didn't have the right to lower the flag.
And if some person thought that they should have had the honor of their relative having the flag lowered, then that would be up to the Board of Selectmen, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, to decide, unless it's spelled out, was he an elected official or was he on a standing committee? Or did he do something, or he or she, do something to benefit the town in an important way? And then that would be chosen by the selectmen. Otherwise, it's for employees, public safety officials, and different flags for different employees in different parts of departments.
Yeah, we do agree with that. We agree that the policy, now that it's in front of us and there's a hearing, we agree that the policy is well-written.
It's worked well, especially now that the Fire Department is doing the administration of the flag lowering, which has worked out quite well.
We have no issues with it. We just wanted to clarify for the public.
For the what again?
We have no issues. We just wanted to clarify for the public what the policy is.
It was brought to our attention by some residents of the town that there may be, there may be issues with the lowering of the flag at certain times. We're having a public hearing. As a Board of Selectmen, we agree that there's nothing wrong with this policy, it doesn't need to be changed, but we're giving the public the opportunity to offer input that it may, it might need to be changed, and we haven't asked anybody else, but so far, nobody said it should be changed at this public hearing. So you did a good job writing the policy is what it boils down to.
Well, it's worked well, and I don't see anybody else here wanting to change it.
Right. Thank you, sir. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public that would like to say anything on this matter?
All right. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't need a motion.
We're not making any change.
We're not changing anything. It is 7:23, so let's do business. There's seven minutes. Under the drawing for the landscape, through the drawing for the...
So my understanding, I can probably answer this, my understanding we have two islands available, and they are, just tell me again what the two...
The island in front of Honey Farms at 120140 and the island at Hosma in Warner Street.
So we had about a month and a half, people had, could put in if they wanted to be...
And we have had some people step forward.
Yeah, some people still associate with it.
So the first one we can do is the Cumberland Farms, right outside here?
Yes.
Commonwealth Farms. Commonwealth Farms.
Commonwealth Farms.
So that would be Central Mass Auto, Central Mass Safety Council Auto School.
Yes.
Called at 140, that's the one that got that. And I guess the other person's gonna be the second one in the... Jeff Legendra in Neighbors, and that's Laurel and Hosma.
That's right.
Maybe you'll let it...
We want to thank them for doing that, and the town appreciates it, and it'll look a lot better, I'm sure, when it's done. All right.
We could do the fire and ambulance contracts, that would be a few seconds.
Yeah, let's do that. Consider vote to sign fire truck and ambulance contract.
So we have Fire Chief here that can speak to it, but we have the two, you had already voted as a board to approve moving ahead with the purchase of the new ambulance and the new fire truck. So what you have in front of you tonight are the actual contracts that would be, vote to be approved and signed. And I'll just quickly review the details and you can add any follow-up. So there, the contracts are with Greenwood Emergency Vehicles out of North Attleboro, Mass. For the fire truck, the contract price is $573,737. And for the new ambulance, it is contract price of $294,800. These contracts are, have been reviewed by Town Council for form, they've been reviewed by the vendors, and just a recent addition today, I'm pleased to say, thanks to the efforts of Chief Welsh, the vendors have agreed to put in a penalty clause that if they were to be late in the supply of the vehicles, later than the date that we'll insert into this contract, then they will be paying a penalty clause of $100 for every month that they're delayed. So it's to the town's advantage. So we are recommending that you vote to approve this contract and to sign.
Do you have anything you want to add?
Nope. It was just waiting for legal counsel to do their review. They gave their comments. There was one pushback from the vendor, which was they didn't want us to walk away from the deal after we have already agreed to it, and Anita agreed to that, and so we took that clause out. They've come forward with everything that we requested. We had asked for the $100 penalty because one of the towns had ran into the situation when the company was, well, the builder was flooded with 24 truck purchases from the city of Boston, and their truck got kind of pushed to the backside. So it helps protect us to stay a little bit in front of the curve. So hopefully we'll stay on line and get moving forward.
Is the penalty $100 a day or $100 a month?
Was it 100, I don't have the contract language in front of me, Tom, do you?
Because if it's a month...
$100 per day after 330 days. So they, it was generally a 300-day period. They wanted to add 30 days to that 300 days, and then they agreed to it with that $100 penalty per day.
I agree with Pat. I was gonna say if it's 100 a month...
Oh, it'd be wild.
And he gets trucks from Boston, he's not gonna put, he's gonna put hosme in the back burner, but 100 a day, I guess, is a little more incentive.
No, but the company was very adaptive to getting us the information we needed, and, you know, we got the warranty information that was requested to be, you know, make sure we had, you know, what is the actual warranty on these vehicles. So, I think we are good to go.
So that's 330 days from the time, the day we signed the contract?
The date that the contract is executed.
Because I need signatures from the board, and then it'll get to the company for their signature. So we've been bouncing back and forth, but we're getting there.
We have a motion on the fire truck.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion on the ambulance.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Street.
We all have to sign?
Yep. All right, it is seven.
Thank you.
And I will be posting a...
Raj, will I read the second? Want to read the second public hearing?
Yep, and what I'll do is I'm gonna take, still needs Town Council's insurance, so I'll just have him do it on a separate page.
Very good, thank you.
Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirement of general bylaw of the Town Office of Spilston, Article 23, public hearing and notice that the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, March 21st, 2018, at 7:30 PM for the purpose of considering amending policy K-5, Workman's Compensation Policy. The meeting will be held in the meeting room number one of the Municipal Office Building, 140 Worcester Street, West Spilston. For additional information or to review the proposed information, please contact the Office of Board of Selectmen or Town Administrator, John Hadley, Chairman.
So these, the changes that are being proposed for this policy are pretty minor changes, and basically it's just to eliminate any confusion within the language. The workers' compensation checks that are issued by our insurer, our workers' comp insurer, basically equal 60% of the individual's pay during the time that they're out on workers' comp. We have always allowed our individual employees to use available sick leave time to make up the difference between 60% of their pay and their full pay. And there had been some language within the existing policy that made, confused the situation, where it referred to use of three days of sick leave time or 40%. That's very confusing. So we basically eliminated any reference to the number of sick leave days and just put it as a general statement that they're allowed to use accumulated sick leave time to make up the difference between the 60% pay and the 100% pay. So that we, the other minor clarification was just putting in the accurate name now of the Worcester Regional Retirement System, since that had not been changed in a while. So it's just those minor changes to the policy.
Any discussion from the public?
From the board? Close the public hearing?
No, no, no.
This spells out three and two sick days, but for, as far back as we know, it's always just been you can use sick days to make up?
Yes, to make up to 100%. And if you try to put a specific number of days in it, it doesn't always apply for each individual employee, because when we determine what the compensation value should be, what we actually do is we look at the past year's income for that individual, and it may not add up to three exact days or two exact days. So it's better not to put in a reference to the number of sick days used.
So in that case, you know, now someone is using three, three sick leave days, they may, somebody may need four, four sick leave days to compensate?
Yeah, they may need 3.25 days, or they may need, you know, 2.75. It depends on the individual and what they earned in the prior year.
How it worked earlier, earlier they have only three, anyone can use only three days, three sick?
Earlier it was, I think there's always been some confusion. I can't speak to how the accounting office handled this before, but the, you know, it could have been situations where the employee didn't receive a full 100% because the specific use of days in the policy prevented it. So this way, we know that an individual had potentially used more than those three days, you know, that were...
To get the 100%.
To get the full 100%.
So they are not losing anything?
They are not losing anything, and use of sick leave days is not a requirement. This is a choice by the employee if they want to continue to get the 100% payment during that workers' comp period.
But just to clarify it, if the employee doesn't have sick time...
They can't take advantage of it.
They just get the...
Correct.
Any discussion? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Make a motion to adopt the changes to the workers' comp policy?
No, public comments.
We ordered to close the public hearing.
No, public, we didn't open per public?
Yes, we did.
We did?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I'll make a motion to approve the changes to workers' compensation policy?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we still have a few minutes before the next meeting. How about we do the, consider request of West Boylston Housing Authority to waive payment in the amount of $5,221. So anybody here on that?
So we have a letter in your packet from the Housing Authority requesting that the town formally vote to waive payment of the pilot amount that the West Boylston Housing Authority should by right due to value be giving to the town. This is more a matter of the new management company taking proper steps to have everything documented and on file. We have not been receiving the pilot payments from the Housing Authority, and in the past, you know, the town has attempted to try to assist them when they had, you know, issues with financial need. So they were hoping that the Board of Selectmen in that ongoing level of support would be willing to formally forego receipt of payment of pilot monies by the Housing Authority.
Is this a for this year, or is it something we have to vote on each year?
That would be, that could be your choice. I mean, you could make, you could set this for a period of time, or you could put it indefinitely until otherwise considered.
Well, it's for a certain amount of money, so it would have to be for you this year.
$5,200 per year, it says in the...
But we, I don't think we can do it now. I think we, I mean, this is, it's ridiculous to say we have town-owned senior housing and they gotta pay a pilot tax to the town. I mean, it's, so we shouldn't be collecting this. I think we should probably consider, you know, for future gender item, after we vote on this, consider making this a policy that, so that we don't have to vote on it again.
Well, I guess we could just make the motion today that we waive the West Boylston Housing Authority pilot money that is to be paid to the town, period, don't put an amount.
No, you don't need to put an amount, and you don't need to put a time period on it. It's your choice.
You just say we waive it. I mean, I guess if we need to do a policy to do that, but I think if we just make this vote, that way, in that case, a future board could change that, but if we had a policy to board, so I mean, we could waive it today. But we've never, we've never waived it, and we've never done it anyway, so...
That's because when the Housing Authority took over the...
No, I'm just saying, but we've never waived it in the past, and it hasn't been paid.
If we have the ability to waive it today and just say, "Let's waive all future pilot payments," I'm fine with that. I just don't, I don't think this is something we should have to revisit every year, unless a future board decides, "Hey, we wanna..."
Do we have the ability to do that?
Yes, so you have the ability to waive these pilot payments, and what you might want to do is to have the motion be that you waive the payment of the annual pilot payments until such future time that a future Board of Selectmen reconsiders the issue.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Consider recognizing certain donations from the library in the amount of $3,204.20 for loss of damaged books and other materials, donations for use of printers and copiers, and donations given in support of general needs of the library, and approved expenditures of these funds for general purposes.
Do we need to make a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's start with two minutes, let's read.
Updates.
Yeah, updates. First update, we do a vote to vote and sign the following contract, OPM Services.
This doesn't say senior center. That's for the senior center.
That's for the senior center, and the FIS committee just recommended that the Board of Selectmen approve the OPM contract.
Call your construction.
With call your construction, and the amount of, we give the exact amount needed.
$110,600.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And sign a contract with a general contract of, uh, RAC builders for, to build the senior senate.
And so that would be in the value of one million two hundred and fifty-one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars, and that includes ad alternates one through three. And I would ask that the board vote to approve and sign the contract, and also to approve the notice to proceed.
What, you said one million?
Something's wrong with that.
That never can be-
No, you're right.
That never can be right. Second?
The contract's up in the, above.
I have it, uh. You're a better pick.
That's the, let me. Contract's, um, section four. Section four. Four million two hundred fifty-one thousand one hundred and thirty dollars.
That's what the ad alternates, one through-
That's what the, the approved ad alternates, one through three.
So that was, is that the motion?
Yes.
With the RAC?
Yes.
Okay, second?
Any discussion?
We should have gone with the, we should have gone with the early amount.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, go ahead Raj, you're on.
Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirement of general bylaws of the Town Office of Boylston, Article twenty-three, public hearing and notice that the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, at seven forty P.M. for the purpose of considering amending the office hours for the office of the town clerk. The meeting will be held in the Municipal Office Building, Selectmen's Meeting Room, one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston. Proposed hours are as follows: Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, eight to four P.M., Wednesdays, eight to six P.M., and Friday, eight to two P.M. For additional information or to review the proposed information, please contact the Office of Board of Selectmen or Town Administrator, John Hadley, Chairman.
All right.
Um, we have Elaine Novia here, town clerk. Would you ever speak?
Introduce yourself, please.
Elaine Novia.
Town clerk.
Town clerk.
Okay.
In order to accomplish changing the hours of the town clerk from thirty-one hours to forty, Anita and I sat down and figured how we could do that. And the long day on Wednesday is to accommodate the public who often need to come after their workday, and we chose Wednesday because that's the night when there's so many people in the building and some of the other offices are open. Um, that's about it.
If I could just ask, I know people are in the building, but what time are the other offices are open? Because I know they, they're open when we get here at seven o'clock.
The treasurer's office, treasurer collector's office stays open.
On Wednesday, I think.
Yeah, everybody, till what time?
They're, they're there from start of day until seven P.M.
So they leave at seven?
They do.
And how about the assessor?
The assessors come in at, oh, I'd have to double check that.
I believe the evening hours are five to seven for that office.
Did you, did you look at, did you think about maybe just going with all those same times so people can, you know, maybe come at nine to seven?
Nine to seven, if that, if that would be preferable?
Then people, the residents will know they can knock off three, because, you know, years ago, we always used to have the town clerk's office open-
Right.
At night, and we-
Yep.
That, that just stopped. But, I mean, that, I just think that would be good because all the groups, all the offices are open together till seven o'clock. I don't know.
It's Wednesday?
So what else you asking?
So Wednesday, nine to seven, that would be fine with me if that works for-
The assessor, the treasurer, and the town clerk will all be open. Easier to tell people, all those offices are open till seven. Is that not the case, Nancy?
The assessors come in in the morning, and then they return in the evening. The assessors are not open all night.
Right, but they're open till seven, yeah. That's, and that's, I believe, years ago, that's how the town clerk used to do it, I think. They used to be open even till later, but that, I think that's, would be the only change. I think that's great that we have hours, because it's tough sometimes for people to get-
Right, and I often come back on, on nights anyways to meet people, make appointments.
Make appointments, but this year, this year, you can tell, we can tell residents that these offices are open on Wednesday nights till seven, and then at seven, you can come to the Board of Selectmen's meeting and watch it.
Hey, there you go. It's a win-win.
Something, leave at six, they won't be able to come.
Okay. Any other discussion from the public? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any motion?
And I would make a motion to change the hours of the, uh, town clerk's office. Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, eight to four, Wednesday, nine to seven, and Friday, eight to two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right, DBW Director Byrne, come on up.
He's still asleep.
She's out on Tuesday nights now, partying up. She's coming, sleeping late.
Isn't she out of sleep?
First one is Pine Arden.
Yep.
This is just a list of all of the, uh, all those that are in the ferment for sewer connection, ones that are looking for sewer pumps.
All right.
Thank you.
So all we're talking tonight about is, is one?
Yeah, but it kind of affects many, not many, but it's five of them, four of them previously requested a pump. I've looked in all the old records, all the old emails from way back, and an oh-six, an oh-seven, eighty-one Pine Arden, uh, requested one in oh-six, and, um, two other ones, forty-five Sterling and twenty Shrine Ave also put a request in oh-seven, and none, nothing was done yet about those.
So, go ahead.
Right now, we're talking about eighty-one-
Yep.
Pine Arden. That's the only one that has requested right now.
Let me give you a little chronological on that. Um, in oh-three, the main and lateral went in, and the first phase, there was no mandatory hookup. The second phase is when they, when the town adopted a mandatory hookup. Uh, Pine Arden was not the first phase, it was after, it was one of the other phases. But while his was being put in, you were under a mandatory hookup. Um, sometime between two thousand and three and two thousand and six, he discovered that, um, the lateral was put in at ten feet where he was on the impression it was supposed to go in at fourteen feet, whereas his basement floor is, is higher than fourteen feet, but it's lower than ten feet, so he can't hook up his basement, um, bathroom. He's got a basement full, finished bathroom, uh, finished bathroom in the basement, and he was on the impression he'd be able to hook up the whole thing via gravity with the fourteen-foot pipe. But the pipe went in at around ten feet, so now he could hook up the whole house, but he can't hook up the bathroom at this point. So he needs a pump in order to do a full hookup. So in oh-six, he, I saw a letter from, uh, John Westerling requesting the DCR pay for that pump, um, due to their error in the, uh, in the, uh, elevation of the pipe. Um, but it was after the, apparently after the eighteen month period that the DCR had given pumps, and after, they had, they had given an eighteen month period from what I understand, where if you wanted to hook up and you did it right away, and you had a, you know, had an issue, whatever, they would give you a pump, and after that eighteen, eighteen month period, they were done, they're not gonna do anymore after that. So they would, they wouldn't pay for it. So it's, the letter was sent to them in oh-six, and they would, they would never responded to it. So, that's pretty much where we are. He's looking for, uh, the town to pay for the pump.
When, the letter was sent in oh-six-
Yes.
When was the mandatory hookup period?
Mandatory hookup started, it started in, whenever the second phase started. Um, I got it from Bob at the, uh, Board of Health. He said originally, the first phase, which I believe was Woodland, there was no mandatory hookup at that point, but then shortly after that time, the town realized that the system wasn't gonna work unless most people are all, everybody hooked up, because you needed flow to get this thing to work right. So they, you guys went back to town meeting and got it voted in that it was mandatory for everyone on the system to hook up. And that was before the Pine Arden was, was done.
So had these people, uh, the, at eighty-one Pine Arden and the other people that had grinder pump next to their name, had they timely responded to a mandatory court order, they would have gotten free grinder pumps?
Yes.
Like, like many residents-
Right, if they, if they had actively pursued hooking up, they would have gotten, from what I understand, a free grinder pump from the DCR.
Many, and many residents did.
Yes, everybody did except, and, but, and another note, and I noticed that was, anybody that's hooked onto the system since then has paid for their own.
Correct.
How much is a grinder pump?
What's that?
How much is a grinder?
Uh, about five thousand. That's to have it delivered to your house and dropped on the front door. To put it in, it's anywhere between, well, the whole system is anywhere between ten and twenty-five thousand.
That's, doesn't count the sewer hookup?
That's, that's everything. That's the full hookup, because they would have to pay for everything, including, from, from their house to the road. That doesn't include the interior piping.
No, but that includes the digging, the pipe, and everything that everybody else in town did.
Yeah, and it includes the cost of the pump.
Right.
Anywhere from ten to twenty-five, and I've heard that might be a little bit high. Depends on who you talk to, you know, depends on the-
When I connected to the sewer, it, it was two grand.
Yeah, I saw some prices-
I charged for, to connect to the sewer back in oh-four.
Yeah. There was one in two thousand sixteen that someone gave a price of forty-five hundred, but I don't think there was a pump involved with that one. And that one never actually happened because they hit ledge and they ended up still on the ferment.
He also, if he had done it within that time, would have got the loan?
Yes, the two thousand dollar loan.
Two thousand?
Zero interest loan.
Oh, but he already got the up.
Yeah.
Amazing how my sewer hookup is exactly two thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's coincidental. Now, this list you gave us says April fourth, two thousand eleven. That's still the case today?
Yeah, I, Shepherd Carey today, she said that's still-
That's still the case.
Still, that's still the list.
Is there anything on why the, uh, the residents at this address didn't try to hook up, uh, during the time when they were getting the, the free pumps issued, or?
I have no paperwork that says why. He, he states that he did it shortly after it went in and found out he needed a pump and the town wouldn't pay for it. But I have no paperwork or any emails or anything that shows anything that happened prior to oh-six. So there's no, uh, no notes, no emails, no meetings, no votes that I could find, and Nancy's looked too, and can't find anything prior to oh-six that states that anything was done.
So there's no reason for the DCR to refuse to pay for it because it was out of the period? Is that what the letter says?
That's what I'm assuming, yes. I talked to Val Pruner, and he, he, he said the same thing. He said the pipe was put in too low and, um, actually, too high. And, but at the time that this man approached them, they wouldn't pay for any more pumps. So.
Second? I, we don't know for a fact, but we can, we can only guess that he chose not to connect, and when he did finally decide to do it, it was out of that time where they were giving.
That's the only thing I can assume, yeah.
So I'm gonna say absent, absent anything that says something different, this guy had a court order to connect to the sewers, didn't do it, now he wants to sell his house, and it's a problem for him, and it's not a problem for the town, it's a problem to him.
But you also mentioned that, uh, some of the residents who were connected after that, they did put their own pumps, right?
Yeah, he has a neighbor, apparently, that had the same situation, wanted to sell his house, and he just, he just did it himself.
I was gonna say, can he put an injector pump in himself?
What he can do is, he can go gravity for the entire house and just put a pump in the bathroom.
Yep.
That's an option.
Be a lot less money.
Yeah, I agree.
That would make a lot more sense, spend twenty-five thousand dollars.
So we don't need any motion because we're not gonna, since consider paying for?
Okay. What else you got?
Next one is chapter ninety?
Yep.
Chapter ninety, we have a letter from the DOT saying that we are supposed to get two hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars this year, and we're waiting on the, uh, official word, but that's the number we're supposed to get. And if we take that and add that to what we have in, in the coffers, we have, uh, four hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars.
It's not committed?
No, it's not committed.
So there's other money in there, like for the finishing Newton Street, that, you've taken all that out of the N B C?
Yep, that's just what, that's what we have available. And this is a quick list of the streets, not hooking out, this isn't a whole information on it at this point, but, uh, likely gonna be, I gotta be in the order of priority, number one. So I'll probably do, uh, probably through six or seven for sure, but I don't know the prices gonna come out for bits, so as soon as I get the bits up, be able to put some prices on there and see how much we can do.
So it becomes as good as it did last year?
Yeah, yeah. Well, the only problem right now is they, they're changing the laws for the asphalt, they're making us use super pave-
Perfect.
Because that's a state spec. I'm supposed to go to, uh, my nature M.A., actually, it's supposed to be tomorrow, but they postponed because of the weather, to let us know what all this means, and hopefully, hopefully the plants are already set up for this, so it won't be a, a major cost issue for us.
I like the price on this one.
It is the right-
Get that price all the time, yeah. I had put in prices, but I didn't wanna, didn't wanna get excited yet.
All right.
Okay, and the last-
When you plan to start this thing?
I wanna start right in July. I don't wanna wait, because, but you see, I got Crescent Street in front of the school? I gotta get that when they're out of school. I don't wanna wait. Last year, we were kinda late, the year before, we were really late. This year, I wanna get on top of it early, like right into July.
I don't see the Goodell Street.
I think we just did that recently, I'm not sure. And a couple of other things, um, a couple, these aren't on the agenda, I don't believe, but, uh, I have a couple of requests for additions to the twenty-four hour sidewalk policy, which, which I'd like to add, because one is Stillwater Heights. They have, uh, a lot of kids that walk apparently down to the bottom, down to Route, uh, twelve to get to the bus, and we're not doing the sidewalks anymore up in that area, so I'd like to add that to the twenty-four hour list. And the other one is, um, Rivinton Drive, which is off of Prescott, just past, that's past Hosmer, but on the other side of the road, it's a small development, again, with sidewalks and everybody walks to, to Prescott to get to the bus, and a couple of people have called asking that we could start cleaning, go back to cleaning those sidewalks so the kids don't have to walk in the street.
Do you know how many kids are there?
I don't. I understand there's at least eight at Stillwater. I don't know how many at Rivinton.
So in order to do that, we'd have to amend the policy, you know?
I believe so, right, it's a policy.
Policy has a provision that bus stop locations can be cleared, and it doesn't specify what those locations are.
Because they change.
I think it's up to you as a board to determine, is this something that you feel comfortable approving under that condition that it's, that these, this is, um, the bus stop locations, or do you feel that because it involves more than just a specific bus stop location, that it should involve a full policy review hearing as we did with the other three earlier tonight?
Just think we're gonna get back to the point with doing all the sidewalks in town again. I mean, just where's the end?
Well, we, we did, we did talk about this last year with the bus stops, because we have a couple of clear bus stops that we clear now, and we have one section of Prospect Street up the very end towards the Worcester line that we left in the thing because it was a known area. I had one known to me that that was a bus stop area. They, they walk over to Pinecroft Ice Cream from the Worcester line, there's like ten houses there, and they all walk the sidewalk, and you probably don't want them walking on Prospect, so we, that's on the list.
Right, I mean, that, those are busy roads.
Yeah.
Very busy roads.
Both of these areas that you're talking about, these kids can walk out onto the plowed street and walk along the side of the road, and they're not endangered, they're not through streets, they're, they're-
They're, they're cul-de-sac.
Yeah, they're, they're big giant circles. The only people that go down those streets are people that live there.
Live there, yeah, I agree.
So I don't see-
Every resident, I'm sure, just has long driveways and-
Yeah, I-
Shovel there.
It's up to you.
I don't know where it ends.
I, I don't see that, you know, that, that it's, it's necessary, they're, they can, they can walk out onto the street and walk along the side of the road. Is it the safest thing in the world? No. Would I say do it along Prospect Street? Absolutely not. But in a neighborhood like that, there are, there's no traffic.
Our, our residents can snow blow their driveway so the kids can, they walk, their sidewalks in front of their house, so-
It is a problem for us too, because everybody plows up, everything up onto the sidewalk. All the driveways are plowed up, and the, and the last few snowstorms have really showed, you know, six-foot drifts and plowed areas on top of the sidewalks, and every driveway's plowed up, so you get fifteen driveways, and, and right now, we don't have a snow blower because it's broke down, so we're doing it with a, with a, we actually built a, like a V-plow, and we've been hammering with that, and it works somewhat. It works somewhat.
If I, if, I did my sidewalk and the guy that plowed my driveway left snow on both sides, I would tell him, sorry.
Yeah.
Fix that.
No.
If the town does it, I see it even on other streets.
Well, there's few people that up, do the sidewalk up on Stillwater.
Yeah.
We just went up and, we actually did go up and just finish it up until we figured out if we're gonna actually do this full-time or not.
I just don't know where it's gonna end. I mean, once we put a new sidewalk in, it's probably, you know, if it's in the neighborhood with this bus, we're gonna be shoveling.
So, we may get call for from each and every bus stops?
Well-
That have sidewalks?
It's gonna be the, the divisions, the subdivisions.
Yeah, I think-
There are many others there, right?
There's a few.
Yeah.
There's a few we stopped, we stopped plowing.
I don't know, I think the intent of, you know, is the busy roads, the dangerous areas, you know?
Well, it was for the kids that walk to school is what we were talking about.
That's what we started off.
I don't think many kids do, but, but that was the intent. And then anything around the center of town for people living near the center of town.
The only problem I have, like with Stillwater Heights, is it's a hill coming down, so if cars coming down, it's dangerous, getting, kids are in the street. It is dangerous to me, that seems like.
Well, we, we've cleared off a, an area for them to stand at the bottom in addition to the sidewalks. It's one of the, that was the first request, and the second request was for the sidewalks in general. And clearing off the bus stop is not an issue. We can do that, and that's not a problem.
From what I see, every one of those sidewalks, they talk about them, that they'll have residents. It's not like there's vacant land that the state owns or the, every-
No, you're right, it's all in front of people's houses, yeah.
So, we're gonna ask the, uh, residents to clean a sidewalk in front of their house like they do with the fire hydrants? That would certainly help.
Yeah, well, yeah, it definitely would help.
That's all done, what about tonight? I think it's done.
Today's the last, tonight's the last night. It's gotta get. Sweet, there's a thing here, two thousand eight sweeping schedule, two thousand eighteen sweeping schedule.
Oh, I didn't, uh, bring it.
I think it's on the website.
All right, yes, we, we have put the two thousand eighteen sweeping schedule on the website along with the two thousand eighteen brush dump schedule. So, if anybody's looking for information on those two things, you can get it on the website.
I mean, I, I would say that it's, you're gonna sweep much quicker now, because, uh, from what I see-
We'll definitely start earlier, and if we do, we'll amend the schedule.
I don't think there's half the sand I've seen in the past.
Well, we, we, we tried very much this year not to use much sand and to use a lot less salt.
I think you're gonna be able to zip through some of these neighborhoods without emptying, I mean, I don't, my neighborhood, I don't see sand like we used to see.
Yeah, and the only reason we do it is so people can sweep it into the street before we get there. So, you're right, there may not be that much of an issue.
I don't recall, I'm, I'm looking at the, I'm thinking of the busy turns that I see in different neighborhoods with tons of sand. I don't see that anymore.
No, it's, it's-
I think, I think the schedule should move faster.
Well, we'll see what happens with the weather, and if it does, we can amend it and put up a, on a revised schedule.
Yeah, but I think that-
When it snows, it's April tenth.
No one will ever complain if it gets done faster.
Right now, it's the end of April.
When it snows, on April tenth.
Yeah.
Let's not say that. The last thing I have is I got, I ran into a DOT guy that I knew. He's a, he's an area engineer for the Mass DOT, and he saw me, and he, he remembered that I had put in a request for Route twelve and one forty to have it milled and paved, you know how bad it is over there, how bad the running is over here at the intersection, and he told me that he got it onto a, uh, the maintenance contract. So, this spring, as soon as the weather clears, they're gonna be coming in here one night and milling and paving that intersection.
Agreed.
So, it'll be good. Because we had a motorcyclist that, you saw how, you see how bad it is when you drive it. So, a motorcycle pulled up, I guess, one day and stepped off the bike and was in the rut, and it was, uh, down she went. She called about it, and I went out and looked at it, looked at it, measured it, and sent some pictures, and DOT, uh, is gonna take some action, so it's good.
And put the, um, towards Boilston, the one forty?
Yep.
They're coming back to do work on that?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, you mean the signs?
Yeah, the signs for the curve. I know they put those things, and they, they put it exactly on the curve. They didn't go any further, but they were on the curve and they look great. But then, there's gonna be signs that say, bad curve, ahead or-
Whatever it was that, that I sent you-
I don't recall what it was, but I just want you-
I'll dig it up and make sure, I actually know him personally, so I'll make sure.
So, they're coming back and do another work there too, right? Because I know there was-
Yeah, because we have-
It seemed like a place that wasn't ever icing this year iced a lot, and it was at the curve.
They pulled out two catch basins on that side of the road without asking us that we had put in for that. And that's exactly what happened, and I complained to them that we're sending trucks out on overtime because you guys, you know, basically messed it up. It was, it was working good. So, they're gonna put in two catch basins back where they were. And also, over on Beaman Street, I don't know if you go Beaman Street much, but there's another space right by the bridge coming down that road, um, Pleasant Street. It crosses right there too, that they're gonna put another catch basin in.
Multi-million dollar project the state did.
Well, they just didn't-
They took out the-
They didn't, they didn't consult anybody here, I guess, you know, before they pulled out those catch basins, and they were there for a specific reason.
Didn't surprise you?
No.
Very surprised.
That's all I got.
To add on, one, one more question. So, we do have some other private road, right? We did get some calls for plowing. One in the Worcester Street, Howard, Howard Downey.
Oh, yeah, I got, well, I got a request at Howard, but we're not gonna do that one. It's a very, very steep road. It's narrow, it's, it's a pickup truck, it's tough to get up there and plow that. It's basically a driveway with like four houses up there. I don't know if you've ever been up Howard Street. It's off of Worcester, just past, just past the, um, Water Company on, on the same side. In fact, there's, it goes up one side, and then they have an area, they call it the chute that goes down, that they don't even use because it's so steep. And then they go straight across, and it's not paved, and then down the other side. And it's not on our list, and you guys would have to approve that to, to have me do that.
And also, it's a private road.
It's a private road.
And the town never took the road.
We've never-
And also, it's not to the standard of the town roads.
They requested it, I mean, they, but, uh, I couldn't do it.
That comes up every year.
Yeah. And there was another one up, uh, up, up a prospect, uh, I forget the name. It's a little short driveway that someone went and called, and I went up and checked it up, and my truck had barely fit in the driveway. It's a driveway with two houses. It's, uh, I forget the name of it, but it's up off Prospect on the right just before you get to the Worcester line. But I also told them the same thing. It's, unless the selectmen approve it, we can't touch it.
All right, thank you.
One, one last thing, the, uh, I'm sure you've heard it, I'm sure we all heard it, just so that publicly, I wanna thank the DPW on behalf of the residents that have approached me on how great a job this town does at clearing our streets. Every town in the area around is, is crap compared to the job you guys do, so it's, it's, it doesn't go unnoticed.
I appreciate that, and I'll let the guys know, absolutely.
I'm just curious, this salt system that we're using, more salt, is it costing us more, a lot of money?
Up until the last three storms, I was a hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars less this year. I, we had done very well. We calibrated all the trucks meticulously. I went to take some, I took some guys to some training classes. We, uh, went through the trouble of calibrating everything so that we know exactly. Because there's an optimal amount of salt to use, and there's, you know, anything after that is waste. And this year, we did a great job of keeping it down under, of course, the last three storms didn't help, but I'm still gonna be a lot less on the salt than last year.
Instead of using sand?
Yes, yes, and then, then you save on the sweeping. I think that was the argument when it was put into place, and you're right, because then there's less brooms, there's less time sweeping, and we should be a wizard on town and sweep like nothing. Where I live, it's like a dirt road everywhere. Because they don't use-
So, some of the curves you notice as you're driving through town, uh, one of the, the, the salt truck would take a turn, and there'll be a lot of salt on that corner. Is that just because?
They may, they have a blast button in those trucks, and so if they have an area that's a troubled area, a lot of times, like going up Woodland, there's a hill on Woodland in the middle of it.
They put a little-
People get to, yeah, they'll hit, they'll hit that and hit it during the storms, a little heavier.
Thank you.
When you're starting the Newton Street?
Uh, as soon as the weather cooperates.
Uh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Oh, if you saw the latest forecast, maybe it is tomorrow. They keep backing down, so.
Oh, good, perfect. That's what we're looking at.
Some of them said, you know, you ruined the road, not fixing it.
Well, tell them, hold on, hold on, we're not done yet.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, buddy.
All right, FY two thousand nineteen revenue projections and preliminary operating budget review. Well, this is good.
John, I didn't have glasses. Just specifically for you.
We're waiting for the, the PowerPoint to, um-
Warm up.
To warm up and start showing on the screen. When we had done the, um, review of the, um, revenue estimates, um, I believe it was two or three meetings ago, um, you had asked for information, oh, thank you, Tom, you had asked for information about how our revenue estimates, compared this year to last year. And so, I just wanted to let you know that, um, and I, I put copies of, um, the two FY eighteen revenue estimates in your packet so you can review them later. But, um, the FY nineteen, um, total revenue estimate, as we talked about before, was the twenty-four thousand, excuse me, twenty-four million, five-hundred-and-seven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. And that is, um, roughly one million dollars, um, more than was predicted, um, last March, roughly a year ago. Um, but then, in October of last year, we did get, um, we did take into account the final locally receipt numbers, and that revenue, um, projection was increased to the twenty-three million, six-seventy. So, um, we're, you know, roughly, say, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand over from what we had last year. So, you had asked for that information, I wanted to make sure that I gave that to you. And if you have any more questions on that, just, uh, feel free to, um, send me an email or what have you. But in terms of, um, tonight's, uh, review of the budget is meant to be a review of the preliminary budget. We have, um, taken all of the, um, town departments' budget requests, and I have, um, met with various different department heads as needed to come up with some compromise numbers in some instances. Um, but this is our first formal round on the budget for a, a draft budget, and I'd like to just quickly go through this tonight, not in much detail, and we'll be having one more opportunity to look at the budget before, um, you have to vote on it. So, um, in total, what we're looking at is, um, a budget here that includes, um, the wages for town employees. For non-union employees, it includes a two percent COLA in those wages, and it also includes any step increases that they would be owed during the period of FY nineteen. It includes vacation buyback values where appropriate. It, what it does not include yet are any additional dollars for additional compensation that may be determined to be necessary as an outcome of the wage study that's in process. Um, and you'll, I'll talk more about that later when we get to the bottom of the budget document. You'll see, just going down here, you'll see that for some of the union, um, wage numbers, we do have three unions that we currently are in the middle of contract negotiations for. That's the police union, the fire union, and the newly formed cemetery union. So, while I have numbers in the budget, which are, um, our best attempt to try to determine what would likely be costs associated with those contracts for FY nineteen, I just wanted to make people understand that negotiations are not completed yet. I do not have final numbers. These numbers may need to be revised depending on the outcome of contract negotiations. So, just running through the budget quickly, and if, um, the, if you need any additional detail on any item, just ask me to go back and we can cover that. But for the moderator, we are promoting level funding at fifty-one dollars. For selectmen, we are level funding at six-hundred, six-thousand-and-fifty-five dollars. For town administration, we are looking at an increase which includes COLA and vacation buyback, and, um, my contract adjustment, that would be at a hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, seven-fifty. For the finance committee reserve fund, I'm actually suggesting that we put it in at thirty-two thousand, which is three thousand dollars less than last year. But when we look at our history of use of the reserve fund, um, thirty-two thousand should be more than adequate, um, within the year for the, what we're seeing annually for, um, accounts against the reserve fund. For the town accountant, we're looking at a hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-eleven dollars. For town audit, we're looking at contract estimated price at twenty-five-thousand, nine-hundred dollars. For assessors, we are looking at a hundred-and-two-thousand, four-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. For treasurer collector, we are looking at two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, six-sixty-one. Town council, we're level funding at eighty thousand. And I do wanna point out again, on the town council budget, I have yet again, as we did for FY eighteen, I am breaking out five thousand of that eighty thousand dollars to set aside in legal consulting services, which is meant to be an opportunity for the permitting boards, whether it's planning board, conservation, ZBA, to get, um, more, much more technical advice from, um, sources other than KP Law. And we have, um, trained consultants that would be available to assist those boards at a much lower cost than going through KP Law. So, that was, that five thousand dollars set aside for that purpose.
How much have we used this year so far of the eighty thousand?
Oh, I don't have that number in front of me, I'm sorry.
Since we asked a question on that, um, we have three new contract, three union contracts being renegotiated, but you're level funding the legal, all those contracts have a lawyer sitting in there for half the time.
No, we do not, no. We, we are not working with a, an attorney at the table. I will be only contacting the attorney if we have specific, unique items that need to be addressed. I, I, there's no need for us to pay for an attorney to sit at the union table.
And that's, that's kind of the same reason why I asked if there's thirty thousand left right now, or, you know, I don't know what the number is, then even if we do need some counsel, there's money in the account.
We do have money within the FY eighteen budget. I just don't have that dollar value for you tonight. But I, but I'm, I do not feel the need to spend money to bring Copelman and Page in when it's not necessary. We'll just ask them to assist us in unique issues that come up with individual contracts.
Which is not unusual, we never bring them into every one of the, everyone.
I think, I believe the fire-
I'm just saying, they, they're involved. I know they, they get consulted on, on the union to go with the contracts themselves. I just wanna make sure that that's accounted for, and the answer's yes, so I'm good.
Okay, under the, uh, the IT, uh, data processing, um, I highlighted this number because we, um, have been placed on notice by our current IT services consultant, Karen Paray, that she will not be renewing her contract. It's currently out for an RFP. I'm requesting proposals from qualified firms. So, you know, I, I'm putting this number here as a placeholder number. I don't know what that final value will be. It will depend on the, um, the consultant actually chosen. Town clerk salaries is coming in at seventy-four thousand, six-oh-four. Elections at twenty-eight, eight-ten.
Can we go back to the town clerk count?
Sure.
How is that down twelve percent?
There was extra O time that was, OT time that was built into the previous year's amounts, and now that we have forty hours a week for the town clerk and, um, the assistant town clerk, um, she, I think she feels pretty-
Forty hours a week for the town clerk and what, twenty for the?
Twenty, I believe it's, um, thirty-one, no, excuse me, it's twenty hours a week for the assistant town clerk. So, we're, um, it, I think it's a reduction in OT costs. The elections are what they are. This addresses the number of elections that we have each year, whether we have, um, number of state elections or federal elections. Planning board is, um, three-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars for that clerical position. For, um, town hall building, we have, um, level funded it at seventy-two thousand, six-twenty-seven. For public safety building, this is the fire station building. Uh, we have, um, slightly reduced that to forty-six thousand, four-twenty. For town report, we have eight hundred dollars. For our cable TV program, and I'd like to point out on this one, this is now required by law to be included in the operating budget, but the value of this cost of fifty-five thousand, five-hundred dollars is offset by the revenues that we receive from charter licensing fees.
Is that, I don't think the, I don't think that's the number I, did I email it to you? That wasn't what they agreed upon, the, the board?
This is what I was given by the PEG coordinator.
That's not, it wasn't there.
Highlight this yellow.
But it doesn't, it doesn't change the bottom line anyway.
The bottom line is the same. Basically, we're constricted in what the value of this is, um, because we have limited, you know, limitations in terms of the revenues that come from the charter fees.
And then the, the, can we change the public safety building to the fire now because it's, it used to be public? I don't know if that's, yeah.
Yeah, we can change it to fire station.
Yeah.
Sure, sure. Um, and then the new category that we have within general government is this new, uh, facilities management program. Um, as you know, this involves the hiring of a full-time facilities manager, uh, the wages of which would be shared by the town and the school. which would be shared by the town and the school. We have the approval of the school committee, approval of the library board, and this was something that had been recommended by the board of selectmen. So, under the new facility management program, we're looking to have, I've budgeted at this point, $84,000 potentially for the value of the actual facilities manager. And then we have, of which we'd be paying half, so for the town share, it's $42,000. Then I'm also added in $3,000 for very part-time clerical assistance to help that individual work with scheduling, bills payable, et cetera. Also, under that category of facilities management, we have a very small amount in there for nominal supplies. And we have an amount of money in there to cover vehicle, gas use, maintenance, memberships to associations, et cetera. So the town share of this new facilities management program would be $48,400. And the school share is built into their education line that we'll be seeing in a few minutes.
So that's, is that, that's not definite yet, all of this?
No. Nothing is definite, these are budgets...
Not the money, the facilities person.
No, we have not finalized the job description. I gave you a copy of the pending draft job description, which will be approved by the personnel board. I will not be moving ahead to fill this position until town meeting votes to approve the operating budget. I would like to think that we might have a facilities manager on board shortly after July 1st.
But we had, I know the board had questions about what he was going to do, that's still, we're still going to talk about that.
And you have the job descriptions in your packet. So the total for general government is $1,251,981, which is a 3.6% increase. Under public safety, we have the police department at $1,687,471. We have fire at $766,161.
Question on fire?
Sure.
Chiefs and chair here, now that you've had, you're at the 24-hour shifts, Manning, okay? And are we looking, are you going to be looking for increase in Manning as far as hiring personnel?
We have discussed the options for review. We don't have it in our budget right now, but now that we have a year under our belt and seeing the open cost that we're seeing, we need to come up with a plan to try to reduce our costs and, but again, with the way we do our staffing, one person will not do it. Well, at least two, you know, and again, we're back to revisiting the grants and, you know, to see if we possibly gain some help that way.
But moving forward for next year, I mean, obviously, there's not another body in there because it's only a $60,000 increase.
Right, this number does not include an increase in staffing.
This number increased just to make up for contractual obligations from last year.
No, I knew it didn't have another person, and that's why I'm asking the question, is that something...
I am working with the town administrator at this time to see what our options are.
The safety communications basically is the assessment that we are being charged by Holden for the regional dispatch. Building inspector, we are putting that in at $95,087. Now, I'd like to point out that within the inspector's salaries, that includes roughly $14,000 for the wiring inspector, gas inspector, et cetera. And, you know, that is always a fluctuating amount each year. It depends on what actually ends up coming through for additional construction. So that's always something that we're trying to do our best guess at aiming what that value might be. And at this point, we have taken that number, we've level funded that number from FY18 to insert into the total salaries line item. So we'll be watching that carefully. Sewers of weights and measures at the $1750. Emergency management, I highlighted these because for the first time, Chief Walsh now has a new CERT team in place. And so we're expecting that there would be some increase in expenses associated with training, licensing, et cetera. So we have increased that total to $7,500. And then in animal control, I've reduced the budget slightly to $16,000. As you know, we had been looking to try to do some regional animal control agreements with other communities, and every single group that we've met with made the determination that they did not want to move ahead with regionalized service. So instead, what I am doing is proposing that we stay with our own animal control officer. And I'm putting that salary in at $13,000. That would cover his work, not only as animal control officer, but also for the annual inspections, for the barn inspections that take place at the end of each year. And by doing that, we've also modified some of the other values in that line. Increased the amount for purchase services because what we're finding is that if we do have any dogs or whatever, that we take responsibility for, we would likely be sending those to Worcester rather than try to have them within our own kennel. Our own kennel currently is not heated, not adequate for long-term holding of animals, so I've increased that purchase of service line slightly. But I was still able to bring that budget down under the FY18 amount.
That's amazing. No one is interested in...
I was, I was...
I'm amazed at that, that that's not a, seems to me like a perfect thing to regionalize.
It is, in my opinion. And I was quite upset that the three different groups that we ended up talking to, none of them were willing to move ahead. So, I do have to say, we have an excellent animal control officer in place right now, and he's doing a great job. So that's the good news out of this.
Just, I mean, I want residents to understand that we try to regional, everybody always says to us, why don't we regionalize things? Look at a simple thing like this, you know, maybe not save a lot of money, but we better the service possibly for all towns involved, but...
So the public safety total is $2,755,799, which is a 9% increase. Education, as you know, it's a bottom-line number that we assign to them, and that is And that's a 3% increase. And I do want to point out that that is slightly shy of the 67% agreement that we have with them, but the superintendent and the school committee are okay with that. They know that we, that there are times when we'll be able to meet that full 67%, and there are times that we have not. This is one of the years, and they know that moving forward, we will stick to that 67% as much as possible.
And the school is already, the school committee and the superintendent are already in agreement?
Yes, I have a written email from the superintendent.
That they're...
They're okay with that number.
They're asking, they're not going to ask for more.
They're not going to ask for more. One of the reasons is that, you know, they understand that it's quite an extra expense for us to take on this new position of facility manager this particular year. So, the other consideration is that in the $145,000 green communities grant that we're being given, it is going fully to school, energy, conservation projects right now, which should give them an annual energy reduction of approximately $25,000. For DPW, we're looking at streets and parks at $746,427. For snow and ice, I'm level funding it at the 166. You may recall that the 166 was quite a bit of an increase over FY17, which was only $112,000. So I'll be keeping it at this level for one more year, and we'll then review again our annual five-year average to see what we are spending and determine if any adjustment is needed for FY20. Street lighting, we're pleased that some of the energy conservation measures being done by our municipal light plant have the effect of being able to reduce the street lighting budget for FY19 down to $57,522. It's a 10% reduction there, that's amazing. And then for trash removal and tipping fees, we are looking at $413,700, and that's based on historical tonnage and contract values. You'll notice that I still have the landfill monitoring expenses zeroed out because we are taking the revenue from our lease with the municipal light plant, the solar farm that is on top of our closed landfill. We're using those revenues to pay for landfill monitoring expenses. And then in the cemetery section, at this point, I have it budgeted at $99,902. But again, this is a brand-new contract that we're establishing for these two cemetery union employees, and this is a placeholder number. We will do our best to keep this in line and not go far beyond that. So taking all those numbers into consideration, the public works value is $1,483,551.
The part-time wage increase in cemetery services, are we anticipating more hours for that person, or is he...
We're anticipating, this person currently is only being paid basically the seasonal wages. And based on what the current workload is, we're looking at a much higher value.
It's going from a seasonal employee to a part-time employee?
It's actually on the basis of what we determine to be full-time versus part-time. It would be a full-time employee because the average would be the 32.5 hours a week. Under board of health, they still operate within the values of revenue that they receive in their revolving fund. Under council on aging, I've highlighted these numbers because with the relocation to the congregational church for three quarters of the year, and then into the new building for the last quarter of FY19, we have made some modifications. We have, at the benefit of Steve McGriddigian, who is going to be paying for the salaries for the custodian during the period of time that we're at the first congregational church, I was able to take out three quarters of a year of custodial wages from the council on aging salaries. And I was able to remove out of the purchase services line the value of the lease that we would otherwise be paying to Steve McGriddigian for the period that we are at the congregational church. What I have added back in, though, is for the fourth quarter of FY19, I'm anticipating that we would hopefully be in our new building by April of 2019. So I needed to add back in enough money to pay for one quarter of that estimated annual operating expense of the new facility, which if you recall from our information sessions was $56,600. So I've taken that prorated amount, one quarter of that amount, and plugged it into the purchase services. So that brings the council on aging budget for the year at $80,516. Veteran services, we are looking at $105,750. And what I have done here is looked at the actual expenditure that we're currently seeing with current cases. In our obligated cases, individuals, veterans who are eligible to receive veterans benefits. And so I'm putting in $100,000 at this point instead of the $120,000. That brings that line down to $105,750. Now, as you are aware, although people in town may not be aware, we are obligated to provide veterans benefits to anyone who is eligible, who lives in town. So while we have seen a historical average on annual expenses for those benefits, that does not mean that at some point, we might find ourselves having another veteran or two who would be deserving of benefits, and we would have to, you know, give consideration to modifying that line. But at this point, I am looking at $100,000 for veterans benefits.
But the flip side to that is the state reimburses us 75%?
We get 75% the year after, yes. And so the total human services line is $186,266, which is a 19% decrease. Under the library, we're looking at total library value of $413,305. And so they are the only category we have active in the culture and recreation, so the culture and recreation is $413,305, which is a 4% increase. Under what we call our other category of expenses, we have our debt, and this includes both our non-excluded debt and our excluded debt. For the values, the non-excluded debt we have is just the fire truck, and that's $115,000 of this value. The rest is all excluded debt. But what we do is on the revenue sheet, as you see, we bring in, we count for that as a revenue, so the revenue offsets the expenditures on that excluded debt. Under regional planning assessment, we have an assessment from CMRPC. We have our Earth Day collaborative assessment for the recycling center, and I have put in the $1,000 toward that Watrusut Greenways rail trail maintenance amount. So that amount is $6,946. And then we come to a series of what we call fixed expenses. We have our county retirement assessment, workers' comp, unemployment compensation, unemployment purchase services, such as a consulting service that helps us deal with unemployment cases. We have a very large value for our group health insurance for both active and retirees. We have our, we have our group life insurance premiums, which is small premiums that we provide to employees at nominal cost of both the town and the employee. We have our Medicare that we're required to pay on employee wages. We have our general insurances, which covers our property, casualty, et cetera. And then we have self-insurance and deductible expenses. So for those total fixed costs, which we call employee benefits/risk management, that is $5,223,969. And so that is one of the biggest hurdles we have in our operating budget each year.
Is the 8% on the health insurance based on the new negotiated rates, or is that an estimate?
That's an estimate because we still will be coming, the ISE Insurance Advisory Committee will be coming to the board of selectmen with recommendations for the active employee rates. And I have to say that, again, yet again, the Insurance Advisory Committee is being very realistic about cost to the employee and to the town. And, you know, we may be able to do a tad better than I originally had thought on the active employee side of it, but we still do not know what the final numbers will be for the retirees, and that we won't know that until halfway through the fiscal year. So this is still an estimated number.
But the bigger number is obviously the active employees?
Yes.
So, and that's based on figures that we have in hand?
We have them in hand.
We haven't approved their recommendation, but...
This number you see here does not reflect that yet because it has not been approved. So I'm hoping that we'll be able to do a tad better than this. We have the ESCO principal and interest payments that we have to pay on the loan, the lease agreement that we have for the ESCO work that was done back in 2014, 2015. So the total other category is $6,341,759.
So on the ESCO payment, if I remember correctly, 94% of the work was in the school?
I believe it's actually 97.
Okay, is that, does 97% get assigned to the schooling?
Yes, we assign that to the school. Yes, in that very complicated formula that we have, where we determine what the maximum amount is that we'll give to the school each year, that amount is taken into consideration. So, what I, remember I talked to you about having set aside some additional money for other expenses, wage-related expenses. What I have done is I've taken the value of $24,000 to be held aside, to be used for the potential wage adjustments that may be necessary as the outcome of that compensation study. And what I'm doing is I am not putting this in the operating budget. This grand total FY19 operating budget you see here is $24,477,828. That does not include the $24,000. Instead, what I'll be doing is having separate raise and appropriate warrant articles for those values so that money can be set aside. And then we will tuck the appropriate dollar amounts into the operating budget at the October town meeting as needed. So basically, I'm just holding this $24,000 aside until we know exactly what's needed in each of the, any of the individual lines, wage lines that may need to be adjusted. So with using the $24,477,828, that's a 4% increase over last year. And that's it for the preliminary budget. Again, we'll continue to work this. I will be sending this to the finance committee first thing tomorrow morning, and we will be reviewing the budget again before you take a vote in April.
Can you make the text a little bigger on this paper you gave us?
Excuse me?
Can you just make the text a little bigger? I mean, there's a lot of empty space in it.
Yeah, I will make that bigger for your handout.
Yeah. Want it smaller, Pat?
What'd you say? I can't hear you.
Review of May annual town meeting action items timeline.
So I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of the different action items that still need to take place in preparation for town meeting and for approval of the FY19 budget. So tonight, we're having the initial preliminary budget presentation. On April 2nd is the deadline for me to send the budget recommendations to the finance committee, but I will actually be sending them out to them tomorrow. Between now and April 13th, the finance committee will begin their review sessions of the budget and meeting with various different officials as needed to review different sections. April 4th is an important date, that's a deadline by which warrant articles need to be submitted for the... That's a deadline by which warrant articles need to be submitted for the May 21st Annual Town Meeting. April 18th is the date that the warrant articles will be given to you. That's your regular second meeting of the month in April. So between the April 4th closure of the warrant and April 18th, I will have a draft warrant ready for your review at that meeting. On April 25th, that is our normal scheduled work session to close and approve the warrant. And then on May 3rd, that's when the warrant gets printed and posted. And the actual annual Town Meeting is on May 21st at 7:00. So those are the different action items that still have to take place before Town Meeting.
Let's see, it's all new business. All business, continued discussion on amendments to policy for business license applications.
So you had been talking about this before. One of the key concerns on the process for renewal or approval of business licenses is the issue of, you know, is there any reason for denial of a renewal of a license? And one of the points that had been brought up was whether or not it was appropriate or feasible for the board to take into consideration any unpaid water or electric charges that might exist with accounts. Is that something that the selectmen can take into consideration? So putting this before Town Council for their opinion, Brian Riley, attorney from KP Law, has said that, in his opinion, the Board of Selectmen or other town licensing authorities should not, as a policy, use unpaid water or electric charges as a basis for denying a license or permit application. However, that being said, if an applicant has water and/or electric charges that are unpaid for at least 12 months, and those that have been committed to the tax bill, the board, the permitting board, whether the selectmen or others, could use the process set forth in Article 24 of our general bylaws to deny, suspend, or revoke the license. But that process requires a hearing, notice to the applicant, and a hearing so that you can discuss the issues of non-payment with that applicant prior to making any decision to deny or to revoke. He's further suggesting that the town may want to propose an amendment to the Town Meeting to amend Article 24 and delete that 12-month requirement, which makes the bylaw much more convenient and effective. So I just wanted you to have that feedback from Town Council in your discussion about the license application and consideration process.
Do you know why he, in his opinion, he says we can't use it? All it says is, in my opinion. Is it more that I'm, is it more clear that I'm not?
Yep. Within, I'm not sure how much you have in your packet, but in a previous email to that one dated, email dated February 20th, he says that generally, a licensing authority may attach reasonable conditions to a license beyond those that may be explicitly stated. With regards to alcohol beverage licenses, however, if an application is denied, suspended, or revoked, the applicant, license holder, may appeal that decision to the ABCC. In KP Law's experience with the ABCC, it does not favor a denial or disciplinary action that is unrelated to the scope of the liquor laws, Chapter 138. For example, the ABCC itself will deny a renewal if it finds that the license owes, licensee owes state taxes, or it's behind in its unemployment insurance, or if it finds out that the owners are not U.S. citizens. All obligations to be eligible to be approved at the ABCC level. Similarly, a suspension that's based on serving minors or intoxicated persons in the past may be grounds for non-renewal under the provision of Chapter 138. But he says if a renewal was denied just based on unpaid water or electric bills, he believes the ABCC would overturn that if the licensee appealed it.
How about sewer and taxes? They don't, they would overturn that too? Because he just says water and sewer here, but he's saying the only things they will agree with us on are the few things.
In the rest of the email, in another section, it says, "The bylaw only applies when there are local fees assessments, betterments, or other municipal charges that are owed to the town," and the word "town" is underlined. "This would apply to unpaid property taxes or various fees owed directly to the town, including unpaid non-criminal disposition tickets. But such bills must be at least 12 months overdue." Based on that language, an unpaid water or electric bill would not fall under the bylaw because, as we noted, Water District and Municipal Light Plant are, in most respects, independent from the town.
But we could use, that's for the liquor license. If we decided to issue a common vic-icular license, part of the, what you need to have is be in good standing with the water and electric bills. They could still have a liquor license. They don't have a food license. You get to the same spot. Ask and not tell him. I mean, I, I think that would...
I don't want to, I have another question, but I'll let you, if you want to answer.
I mean, if, go ahead. I mean, I'm just thinking out loud.
At first, he says, at the top of his email, he talks about what, if it's an appeal, what he's, he's found they agree with the town on. And it was only a couple of things. Then he jumps from that to our bylaw. But he doesn't say if, if we don't renew it because of taxes and sewer, that they would, the appeal would be an issue. He only talks about...
Water and electric.
No. Up at the top, he only talks about a few things that they would agree with us on. So if we had water and, if we had water and electric to it, the other two things that we currently don't renew licenses for are also items that they would not agree with anyway, from what he says.
So in this longer email, which I had forwarded to all of you when I received it, there's a section that reads that the Board of Selectmen could utilize Article 24 of the general bylaws to deny, suspend, a liquor or common vic-iculars license for unpaid charges, provided that the charges are stated on the tax collector's list as required in Section 3 of the bylaw. This bylaw is enacted in accordance with a general law that has a very specific list of licenses that are exempt, and none of those three licenses are included in the exemption. Those exemptions include open burning, bicycle permits, sales of rifles for charitable purposes, dog licenses, fishing, et cetera, and does not apply to the entertainment licenses for businesses with a liquor or common vic-iculars license. So, I mean, I'm not sure if this longer email answers some of your questions. Do you have that in your packet?
So, so I guess back to Pat's question, then?
I mean, so...
He's talking only about liquor licenses.
If we're talking liquor licenses, if they owe taxes, we can, it sounds to me like if they owe the town taxes or sewer, we can deny a liquor license.
But he says if it's an appeal, he says the only issues that they, they agree with the town on is for those few things.
Right, which is tax...
No. The talk part. Then he comes to our, then he talks about our bylaw.
I think, I think what he's, if you'd like me to get additional clarification from him, I certainly can. I think what he was specifically referring to in that first section was the, the issue of unpaid water or electric bills. And I think he's, what he's stressing here in the other email is that, you know, that goes beyond the town. The town has this specific bylaw that says that we will not issue licenses, permits, et cetera, if they owe taxes to the town. So, but it says town. So that he's saying the word "town" does not relate to the Water District or the Municipal Light Plant.
So in my, in my experience with the ABCC, it does not favor a denial or disciplinary action that is unrelated to the scope of the liquor laws. How is taxes and sewer related to the liquor laws?
It's not. But we also have, as I just mentioned, the other town bylaw, which says we will not issue licenses or permits to anyone that's withholding ta, payment of taxes, et cetera, to the town.
Right. So if we had water and sewer, I know the town thing, but it doesn't, it's still the same. It's, he says, in his most cases, when it's appealed. So if we hold it for our taxes, it's not related to liquor laws. And he says, in his experience, that's the only time they really agree with the town.
So if you're looking for clarification from him, if we deny it specifically for non-payment of town taxes...
Can be it?
Will that be, will any appeal to the ABCC be denied?
Yeah, I guess so, but I think he's answered it. Says his, in his experience.
No, because the last paragraph says, in reviewing Article 24, I note that it has not been amended to, to take advantage of recent statutory amendments to the general laws. The amendments significantly eliminate the requirement that in order for overdue taxes or other charges to be used, they must be outstanding for at least 12 months. I read this as if you deny it for taxes or other things that are due directly to the town, that will be approved. If you deny it for, again, that's my reading of it. That's not your reading, neither is our lawyer's.
No, but I'm just, I'm reading the one simple sentence that says, "In my experience, the only thing that they favor a denial or disciplinary action for is liquor laws, general law, Chapter 138."
And I think what he's saying is, in order to make sure that the town has as strong a cause as possible for denial of liquor licenses or other licenses due to non-payment of taxes, we will make a stronger case for ourselves, the town, if we amend Article 24 of our general bylaws to take advantage of the recent statutory amendment.
But we're focusing on the liquor laws. We have, as a town, a common vic- license to serve food. If, if we want to make it so that restaurants and everybody, for that matter, not everybody has a, we weren't just talking about alcohol licenses. We were talking about licenses in general. If we want to make it, part of getting a license is that you have to pay your water bill, or you have to pay the, yeah, the water bill and the electric bill, it, fine. We would lose if we were to say, "We're not going to renew your liquor license."
There's no appeal for the other ones.
The other ones is issued by the town. If we make it our policy that you, you have to be compliant, you know, and, and I would say, it shouldn't, you don't have to have it paid in full. You have to have an active agreement in place to be paying your bill, you know, something set up. You're not just ignoring it. Okay, so we can't, we can't deny a liquor license. You take away their food license, you get to the same spot.
Do we, Nancy, do we ask for all of our other licenses? Do we ask the tax department and everybody?
All of the licenses, all of your licenses that you issue, yes.
Not just the liquor. We do them for every, we ask taxes and everything, right? I'm, I'm fine with that. Then if we, then there won't be an issue. Because the way I'm reading this, even the taxes in, in sewer, the, the state may, the ABCC may overrule us because it's not a liquor violation. So I have no problem with putting all of the things, leave it the way we have it currently, but putting everything under the, all the other licenses that we give out to town. Water, sewer, taxes, and electric.
So what the attorney's saying is that in order for unpaid charges for water or electric to get committed to the town property tax bills, there must be a certain local acceptance of that statute. So if you're wanting to do that, then we would need to put this on the Town Meeting warrant.
But that's if we're going to do that for liquor licenses. I think, I mean, we have a, a selectmen's policy, I believe. Is it, is it a bylaw? Is it a selectmen's policy on issuing licenses? It's a selectmen's policy, correct? So our selectmen's policy says you have to have all of these things done. The liquor license is not governed by the town. It's governed by the state. Once the state issues the liquor license or approves a liquor license, it, it's much more difficult for us to take away that liquor license. But if somebody's not in compliance for all of the other types of licenses that we issue, sure, you can have your liquor license, but you can't have your entertainment license, and you can't have your common vic- license. It gets us to the same spot.
But in that case, we'd have to have a public hearing to amend the license?
Yeah, of course. Yes, yes.
How about this 12-month thing that he says to go to Town Meeting to, to change that 12-month?
So in reading it further, in order to adopt the local acceptance statute, to adopt that, it would require a vote of the, a vote of the voters at a district meeting. He's, he had checked with the town clerk to see if there was any vote taken by the Water District or the Municipal Light Plant. She had no record of it. However, if those statutes have been properly accepted by the Water District or the Municipal Light Plant, then their charges could appear on the tax bill.
Yeah, that's, but that, again, I think that...
I know electric bills go on the tax bills after 12 months.
Yep. So then we did receive clarification from John Fitch that the Light Plant had accepted that statute. So, but it's a question now as to whether or not the Water District has or not.
But it's not, I don't think it's germane to the conversation of the license renewals because we just exclude that provision from the liquor licenses. And if the board so decides that's the direction we want to go, and so, all right, hey, you have, here's your liquor license, you don't have any other licenses. It's...
Yeah, I, that's not a problem. I guess there's still the question about the...
Policy.
The Planning Board issues, the...
Zoning violations.
Zoning violations. I know that there's a committee needing to talk about that, but I think they should still be used against these groups.
And we just had a meeting of the permitting board chairs this evening. So they're, they're moving ahead with, you know, trying to reach consensus on how to deal with that. So their next meeting is mid-April, April 18th.
So I guess...
We cannot do anything until then.
Yeah, so I don't want to, I don't want to change the policy once and then find out because I kind of disagree with that. If it's more than six years old, then we just can't look at it anymore. I mean, I remember we talked about that. That doesn't seem, so the way to, the way to get around it is just try to put the town off for six years. I know we're not going to try to let that happen anymore. That's, I think the group is talking about that. We're not letting them go this long, but, so I...
The group has come up with a way to address things moving forward.
Right. All right, so we'll put that off till the future.
Well, I think if we can put it on the meeting after the 18th, so not a public hearing, but at least...
The first meeting in May, then?
An update so we don't, so we don't keep putting this off till Jan, the second meeting in January, when we also approve the liquor licenses and all the other licenses in town.
All right. Update on Board and Town Administrator's Goals.
Okay, in your packet, you have a list of the different goals that had been agreed to. Under the Selectmen's Goals, the goals were to enhance economic development, to establish a formal town beautification program, to develop citizen and employee customer service satisfaction surveys, and a Tiffany Drive RFP. Under the first goal for Selectmen of enhancing economic development, so far, the chairs of the various permitting boards, as we just discussed, have been meeting informally once a month to discuss ways to improve the permitting process for new and existing businesses. All permitting boards are now copied on each other's agendas and minutes to keep all boards updated as to other permitting activity, and discussions are underway regarding bringing new manufacturing business into town. We'll actually be having a discussion about that later on in this agenda. For Selectmen's Goal Number Two, establish a town beautification program. There has been review of the possibility of establishing a light bylaw. Simple bylaws from other communities have been obtained and reviewed. A meeting was held with the Board of Health to discuss non-bylaw options for making improvements within certain properties around town. The goal also included looking to identify town buildings and facilities that need repair or upgrading. The DPW has identified numerous exterior improvements that will be made during 2018, and Town Hall is seeking quotes for the installation of a lawn irrigation system. As to the roadside cleanup program, the Worcester County House of Correction, work crews will begin with regular cleanup of road sides starting this April. And DPW is going to be surveying existing signs to identify missing or deteriorated street signs. And once that survey has been completed, they'll be bringing forward a cost estimate for consideration for sign replacements. Under Selectmen's Goal Number Three, citizen and employee survey...
I mean, just on the beautification?
Yep.
Are you, is there, are you working on that, Town Administrator?
It's for us.
It's John and, and Pam.
You had the one meeting with the, the Board of Health, I, I wasn't, I don't remember the reason why, but I couldn't make it.
So as far as old buildings and things like that?
Yeah, we talked to them about the violent, polite laws and stuff like that, what we can do, what we can't do. We still have to have another meeting with them, we, we only had, you went there for the first.
No, I couldn't make that meeting, I don't remember the reason.
Under goal number three, citizen and.
Oh, okay.
What's that? The citizen and employee survey, we do have a Northeastern University student that's accepted this as a special project. She's ready to begin working with the two selectmen, Chris and Raj, who have agreed to take this on. We have a draft list of questions that have been developed. C M R P C had provided a basic template for an online version of the draft, and so that is moving ahead. We're trying to set a date of chance to meet and review feedback from the Northeastern University student on that citizen survey. And then a list of draft questions for the employee satisfaction survey are being gathered. Under the selectman's Tivnan Drive RFP, the RFP needs to be updated. Originally, we'd hoped that that would be done in early March, with the schedule of proposals being due in late April. That has been pushed off. Timeframe would need to be determined. I will be bringing forward one proposed use of town property to the board at the next meeting, and depending on the outcome of that, we'll determine if the RFP still needs to be continued. But obviously, any proposal that's received, any decision made, would likely need some town meeting action, and that obviously would be, depending on which route the board decides to take.
The land up there, John, what, what's left to be used is a lot of hilly and, yeah, land, there's no real flat land left. The Tivnan Drive.
Tivnan Drive.
And it isn't the light department talking about putting more?
No.
Not on the, there's three sections there, two of which the selectmen have control over, the middle section and the upper section. And the middle section is probably the steepest in terms of topography, amount of ledge, trees, et cetera. The section, the top section up by the Boylston Town Line is somewhat under control of the light plant, and, you know, I think we would need to work with them to try to determine any potential use of that, but it's really, the, the middle section is the most viable section with the least restrictions, but it's challenged in terms of its topography.
How about the lower section to the right of the solar?
That's the section that's under the power lines?
Yeah. Is it all on the power lines?
No, I thought that was controlled by the light department.
No, that's where we were gonna put, that's where we were gonna put.
No, they have a plan.
Go further up the next one.
The big, oh, the big open area, was it, they're gonna be a driveway through there?
The open area was, yeah. But there's, there's still a lot of, uh.
I think that's the place, you know, they are, the, the light plant is proposing a magnetic wheel to store the energy, flywheel.
That's on their lower lot, the lot closest to the intersection.
That's not on the town, that's not on.
Their property.
It's on their property, correct?
Exactly.
So, near to the solar fence.
I, I guess we can just, I guess it doesn't cost us anything to put on our RFP, but what really, the land that's left is so, needs so much work.
It does.
I mean.
Would have to be the right deal.
Okay, so that's for selectman goals, and then in terms of town administrator goals, those goals were to complete a review and overhaul of the job descriptions for town employees, to develop the five-year revenue expenditure projections, to develop the facility manager position for FY nineteen, to bring the ongoing master plan update to completion, and to complete the update of the financial policies and procedures. Under goal number one, which is the review and overhaul of job descriptions, all the non-union job descriptions have been reviewed with department heads and updated. Review of the resulting drafts is underway by the personnel board, hopefully aiming towards spring approval of those job descriptions. For goal number two, the development of a five-year revenue and expenditure projection, we have a draft revenue expenditure plan that's been developed with the assistance of an intern from Assumption College. There's some editing that still needs to be done on that plan, and when it's completed, it will be presented to the finance committee for their comments.
For that, I would recommend waiting until after town meeting, because they meet three nights a week, and they're not gonna touch it until then.
And to be quite honest, the intern that we had working with us needed to go back to her home country for family reasons, so she's not back yet to help us complete it anyways. Under the development of a facility manager position for FY nineteen, the school administration and library board are in full agreement with the need to develop the position. This facility manager would be responsible for the oversight of all town buildings. You have a, a copy of your, of the job description for that position in your packet. Schools have agreed to pay for fifty percent of the shared annual program, with the exception of the townside clerical assistance that's needed. They have plenty of available clerical hours within their existing staffing, so they would just use existing staff to handle any clerical work that would need to be done on the school side. So the plan would include the hiring of one full-time facility manager and one five-hour per week clerk for the town side. This would include use of an existing town vehicle and developing the town share, which was approximately forty-nine thousand, into the FY nineteen budget. The school share of that is built into the education number that we reviewed a few moments ago.
Again, we're still, this, I thought this ninety-five was eighty-five the last time we talked, was it always ninety-five? I thought it was eighty-five thousand. So is that, is that including the five hours for the?
That includes the five hours for the clerk and the town, these, includes townside, the facility manager, includes the clerical assistants, and it includes the school share.
I'm just.
We've got to think on that.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, is it, could, could it possibly be cheaper to sub that, the, the things we want our facility manager to do? Because, we're still gonna talk about it.
I think that's something we need to bring up in a future meeting, because I, I know a lot of this board is not in agreement on what exactly, what this scope is.
We don't know what he's, we don't know what he's gonna do, there's a union that he has to deal with, that the school, so we can't bring a new supervisor in without, he's gonna, he's gonna supervise only two janitors in town, but he's not gonna supervise the people at the school.
I think you have the job description, it was in your packet from the March seventh meeting, it's in your packet again tonight. I think it, you know, it tells what the expectation is in terms of the scope of duties for that position, tells what the intended qualifications for the position are. In terms of how it would work on the school side, the individual would not be dealing directly with the union employees, there may be interaction with the union employees, but not dealing directly with the union employees. He would be dealing directly with the business manager on the school side. The business manager is the individual on the school side who's responsible for the oversight of their custodial staff. And I think when you look at the scope of duties that's included in the job description, you'll see that the majority of the, of the duties includes prioritizing and planning and oversight of various different building maintenance projects, construction projects. It includes the development of annual maintenance plans for all of our buildings. You know, so there's the development of the capital plan. On the town side, it would include some minor hands-on work in terms of minor building repair, et cetera. It wouldn't, it'd be the oversight of any vendors that are brought in to own any of the, of the buildings. So, you know, I think you'll see that it's, it's a very appropriate scope of duties. It's been, that scope, the job description has been approved by school administration, and, you know, I think that it's something that, you know, could be potentially considered as an outsourced position, but that was not what we talked about originally, we had talked about developing a facility manager position in-house. So, you know, if the board would like to consider options to that, then, you know, I think it would be important to have a sit-down meeting with the school committee, or at least the minimum of the superintendent, and also maybe representative from the library board, to discuss that option.
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I didn't think that the cost would be that much. That's the only reason why, I don't know if the other board agrees, but I just thought eighty-five or ninety-five thousand dollars for this department, or eighty-five for his pay, I believe, then another ten.
I have eighty-four thousand.
Eighty-four.
And that's just a placeholder number.
That's not including a vehicle.
No, it's not including all the others.
Is that number, or that position addressed in the compensation study?
It is.
They're saying we'll get some ideas of.
So, I mean, it to.
But I think from what we looked back to, there weren't many towns that had this position.
There's a number of towns that have a position. You know, the, the lowest range, I think, was the town of Boylston, and theirs was seventy-six thousand dollars, I think, for that position. I don't have that survey in front of me.
Yeah, I just, that's gonna be, I think that's, we're gonna find out that a lot of towns, under a study is gonna, are gonna say, we don't have one, so we can't answer it.
Under the master plan update, the townwide planning committee is working with the necessary boards and staff to develop the draft chapters. One public forum has already been held in January, and we're still getting ongoing public feedback for the first draft chapters that have been completed. A second public forum is being planned for late spring, date to be determined, to review the next set of draft chapters. Liaisons from each board or department responsible for the chapters will be asked to begin actively working with the assigned committee in 2018. One of the concerns that the townwide planning committee has is making sure that within the identified goals in each draft chapter, that there are no areas of conflict, and if there are, then we'll need to have multiple meetings between those impacted chapters and committees to resolve how we handle those situations. In terms of the updated financial policies and procedures, the finance team is currently working on numerous suggested updates and additions to the policies. We have some feedback now from our auditing firms, Sullivan and Powers, they've been great in helping us pull together some of those modifications, and the draft set of policies would be presented to the finance committee for their feedback before bringing it to the board of selectmen. And that's where we stand on all the various goals that we've assigned ourselves.
All right, town clerk stipend.
So, we have been looking at trying to assign a value for a stipend for the town clerk for the period in which she was the town clerk but was operating that office by herself, which was roughly a period of, of six weeks. So, as some, some members of the board are aware, I had met several times with the personnel board to seek their guidance on what would be an appropriate way to provide compensation in this situation. When we reached out to other area communities, there were no other towns that offered this type of compensation for department heads who were filling in the duties in the absence of staff under them. So, in going to the personnel board, they've held several meetings on the matter, and what they recommended is that, and they'll be, they'll be putting forward their own, you know, guidelines on this matter, but in this instance, what they recommended was looking to give consideration to increasing the pay for that individual for, at the rate of five percent of the existing hourly rate of pay for the period in which she was working by herself. So, in doing the math, that was two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars, excuse me, two-hundred-and-ninety dollars, that would be the value of that stipend for that six-week period that she was by herself, and that was from January third to February twenty-sixth. So I'd asked the board to approve the authorization of that stipend at two-hundred-and-ninety dollars.
Does not seem like enough money myself for that. I thought, when you had discussion, because I was at the meeting with the personnel board, it was ten percent.
They were talking about a range of different situations. The final recommendation that they made at their meeting in February was five percent. And in this, and also in that instance, they were recommending that it not start until a certain period of time has passed, and if we went with that parameter, there would not be any stipend for this position, but they took into account the fact that she had been working in that office by herself for quite a number of months before being appointed as town clerk, so they felt that that time period, in this instance, didn't really apply.
So you, they're saying that if someone's out for a week sick, or out for two weeks sick, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be a stipend, in the future, I'm saying.
Right, they're looking that if, if an individual leaves, the, the typical turnaround time to fill that position, you know, between advertisement, interview, and hiring somebody, you know, is typically a month to forty-five days. So, while they have not formally voted anything, I have not seen anything, you know, in terms of final decision and writing from them, I think what they'll probably end up recommending is that anything over a forty-day, forty-five day period, the, you know, the department head at that point would be deserving of additional compensation. The thought there is that, you know, the department head is overall responsible for that office anyways, that's taken into account in the job description and in the, you know, the base wages compensation provided to that individual, and they felt that, you know, department head should be able to at least maintain basic office operations for at least that period of time before it becomes onerous to, not only to the individual, but to the operations of the office.
And how long did Elaine do that before we made her active? Was it over forty-five days?
She received a stipend for her acting position, totally separate from what we're talking about now.
So, well, how many days did she do that?
From the time she was appointed town clerk to the time the new assistant town clerk came on board was about six weeks.
That was.
January third to February twenty-sixth. No, that was when she was town clerk, as, acting as a department head.
Okay.
January third till when? January third till when?
To February twenty-sixth.
That was two months.
And so taking her daily rate and increasing it by five percent, the additional amount that would be owed to her would be the two-hundred-and-ninety dollars.
I don't think that's.
That's not enough money. I, I think, I think we should make it at least ten percent, so.
So that would be five-eighty.
Five-eighty.
So, it's double, right?
And I, that's what, when we were at the, the meeting there, we're talking about ten percent for over forty-five days, so.
And this is for two months, six weeks, six weeks or two months?
January to the twenty-sixth, the third of January to the twenty-sixth of February.
Seven weeks.
Currently, there's no policy in place.
I'd make, I'd make a motion, then I guess, for the, for ten percent of the time she was, within that time of January third to February twenty-sixth, the ten percent stipend.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
So that's not going to be the, two-ninety times to five-eighty, it's, it will be, we'll count the number of days.
Oh, they told us five, I'm saying ten percent in case the two-ninety's wrong, but.
Two-ninety's, I agree with it.
It's two-ninety doubled, because they said five percent was two-ninety.
From January one to whatever the date is.
January third to February twenty-sixth.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I guess we should look into this to have something in place in case it happens again.
That's what the personnel board is working on.
Right.
All right, consider joining class action suit on O P.
That would, will you look at me?
John asked this to be placed on the agenda.
I know there's a lot of towns in this Commonwealth that are joining this, I believe it doesn't cost anything to join it.
It does not cost anything to join it.
And the benefit is if, if, the compensation will come later on for buying all the knock in, and various things like that, I believe it's kind of no brainer not to join it.
I don't see any, I don't, it doesn't seem like there's a downside, do you know anything about it, chief?
I didn't hear about the Commonwealth.
Well, joining O P lawsuit, lawsuit.
I can give some insight to it. So, the Small Town Administration of Massachusetts held a meeting last week, and Mark Rich of K P Law was present, and basically, in a quick summary, you know, he's explaining that this would be a class action suit. And basically, in a quick summary, you know, he's explaining that this would be a class action suit, that the communities could jump onto at no expense to the town, that, that they're very hopeful that this would go to a settlement situation, not actually go to a court case to be argued on. The settlement that would come out of this would be shared by the member communities that jump on. You know, how that value of that gets shared yet to be determined. And the attorneys involved would take a percentage of the settlement amount. So, it would be only, you know, and revenue positive for the communities, it would not be a cost to the town. KP Law is in the process of developing an information sheet on how this whole thing would work. And they're gonna be putting together sample motion that communities can use if the board of selectmen want to vote to join into the lawsuit. So, I should have that for you, for your April fourth meeting.
We're just gonna make a motion to do it, but I guess we need a sample motion.
I mean, there is gonna be work involved. If you look at the third paragraph, you know, we have to say what our costs are, and so...
Well, I think, I think, we know some that, I mean, the chief could, I'm sure the chief can get costs in regards to...
Responses to all opioid overdoses. But it's, it's not just, hey, sign us up, we do have to do some work to do this.
I think the benefit...
I agree.
Okay, so, April fourth, we're at the, hopefully have the ability to vote on that. Okay, initial discussion on TIF for one-twenty-seven Hartwell Street. Steve, fall asleep back there? All right, do you wanna come up?
I'll stand, it's been a long night. I'm Steve McRidgian, the developer and owner of the one-twenty-seven Hartwell Street property. And on behalf of our proposed new capital investment and our new tenant Cogmedics Incorporated, which is a division of the Coughlin Companies, they've asked me, as the landlord, to inquire about a tax increment financing agreement on behalf of our investment and their investment in town. The existing building is about a fifty-five thousand square foot building at one-twenty-seven Hartwell Street. We're gonna make an initial investment to renovate that pursuant to the landlord's investment. The tenant will make an additional investment of an unknown amount. But our investment on just the existing building will be about two-and-a-half million dollars. The tenant has asked us to expand that existing building by another twenty-five thousand square feet for a total of about eighty thousand square feet, and that addition will cost about two million dollars. So, the landlord, developer's investment will be about four-and-a-half million. I suspect the tenant will probably spend at least a half a million dollars of their own money with customized clean rooms, furniture, equipment. So, it'll be a benefit to the town, not just on the real estate tax, but on the personal property tax on behalf of the tenant as well. So, the total investment could be, between the landlord and the tenant, could be around five million dollars.
With the exception that if they're a certified manufacturing firm, they're exempt from the personal property.
Correct, that's correct, I'm pretty sure they are, so, good point. So, it'll at least be a four-and-a-half million dollar initial capital investment on behalf of the landlord.
So, I guess, whatever's gonna, who would the TIF benefit?
Well, the TIF has, the TIF really benefits the landlord, because the TIF stays with the property owner. But because our lease agreement will be a triple net lease, the benefit will be similar to the Curtis Industries TIF further up the street at seventy Hartwell. We initiated the TIF as a landlord, developer, investor, but the beneficiary is really the tenant, because their lease agreement stipulates that they pay rent, taxes, utilities, insurance.
My question is, when Curtis was coming into town, Curtis approached us and said, hey, we wanna move into town. In order to make this work for us, before we sign any lease, we wanna negotiate a TIF. You've got a done deal with these people, they're coming in.
Correct.
So, the benefit to the town here is what? Basically, the company that we know is moving here, it's a done deal, we just moved out of there, you just emptied your whole building, they're coming. The town's not gonna get any additional benefit for lowering the taxes to this company.
Well, they're not really lowering the tax. The primary tax, the existing tax is gonna be maintained. And once the assessors reevaluate the improvement on the existing building and the expansion, the TIF will take into account that...
Fair enough, the town, let me rephrase that. The town is not gonna get any benefit by not charging the full rate of tax on any expansions that are gonna be done, because it's a done deal. They're moving in, they're, they're not gonna change anything. So, to me, it, the TIF is supposed to be for the benefit of the town. We offer a TIF in order to lure businesses to come, this business is here.
I just wanna make the board aware, they're bringing a hundred-and-thirty-plus jobs to town. The building is only employing about twenty-five people.
I guess I'll, I'll say what Pat said, they're doing that with or without the TIF. I guess if you, if you came to us and said...
It's a sweetener for me to them.
Right, I think, I think if you came, or they came, or you came to us and said, we're thinking about putting on an addition, but without a TIF, we're not gonna add the addition, then I guess the issue would be different. But you, this is a done deal, and...
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree, Mark and disagree, but, I mean, the TIF is also, can be negotiated in terms of its starting base and its tail. So, maybe you're not as generous with this TIF as you were up the street, but just as a little sweetener.
I, I don't see why, you know, representing the, representing the town in the town's best interest, it would make no sense for us to say, you're coming to town, great, oh, by the way, we're gonna, we're not gonna increase the tax base to the town when you're gonna do this whether we do it or not, it doesn't really make much sense.
I understand, it's just a request, but if you request, you know, some return, or some investment, or some donations from the tenant, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for them, but they're a large, multi-hundred-million-dollar corporation, so, they have the wherewithal, but it's, it's a two-way street. So, I'm just, I'm not really here on their behalf, because the TIF has to be initiated through the landlord and the property owner. But it's just a request that I initiated on behalf of the tenant, that I told him I would inquire about, so...
But as Pat said, the last time, I think Curtis was sitting here with you. Because they were not gonna, they were not, they were, they were kinda playing this in a few different towns.
There was a spoke in their wheel that they needed to have happen as part of their overall decision-making process. But these folks are coming, and it's not like if the town or the board denounces this, that they're gonna check out and go elsewhere, but...
I hope not for you, with everything you just went through.
Well, I mean, if, the only thing I would say is if you talk to them and they have other information that you don't know of, or we don't know of, I mean, I'd consider it again, but I agree with Pat on this. If it was the other way around, I think we would probably be discussing this, if they said they weren't gonna come.
No call-in again, it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to start at a hundred percent. It can be, you know, a token, you know, twenty, eighteen, sixteen, twelve, ten, and after five years, it goes away. I don't know, you know, I don't wanna dictate that. I'm making this presentation to the board and to the municipality to consider some, some sweetener, if you will, for the fact that they're bringing multiple jobs. This is, you know, a very professional corporation, it's clean industry, it's research, it's development, it's engineering, it's boot collar, manufacturing, distribution. And they're gonna be here a while, they signed a long-term lease. And I think their lease, in terms of lease options, they want like five, five-year options. This firm's gonna be here a long time in town. You'll, you'll get your money eventually. So, I just ask that perhaps you consider a little gradation with the increase in the new investment. Again, there'll be no, no reduction, you know, from where we are now to where we will be once the building and addition are completed, but a simple request for some concessions, you know, after they move in.
Thank you, Steve. All right, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, discussion and consideration of bylaw to regulate marijuana, recreational marijuana in establishments. This is something...
So, you may recall that you had this discussion a few meetings ago, and you had asked that I contact the planning board and ask that they spearhead a committee to look into what might be necessary to regulate recreational marijuana. And the feedback that we had from the planning board was that they agreed that, you know, it would be good to establish a coordinated effort, but that they did not, they did not have interest to be the body to spearhead this. Instead, they felt that it should be done by the board of selectmen, but that once the scope and critical issues needed with, you know, within the zoning bylaw change or what have you, that the selectmen could then, you know, refer that matter to the planning board, and they would take it from there in terms of reviewing the wording, holding the public hearings, et cetera. To that point, they have assigned two of their members, Mark Frieden and Paul Anderson, to work with whatever subcommittee the selectmen end up establishing. And also, I know from the ZBA, we have David Themia and, what's the other gentleman's name? Andrew Freeland, who are willing to be the ZBA liaisons to that process. So, I wanted basically to let you know that it's back in your lap and try to figure out what the next step should be.
I think that's, I think that's fine, I think we should still do it.
We have to do it, the reason is enough.
We don't have to do it, I mean, they would have...
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'll put it differently, not the board of selectmen, I'm sorry, the bylaw has to be done.
Why?
We need to, because it's not, the, if we don't establish some of the bylaws, the number of stores, and where do you, where do you put the stores, and the boundaries? Where, how many square feet from the schools and other things?
No, that, that, they have to, reading right here, if the town takes no action, they, they have to be five-hundred feet from a school.
But, they, but, yeah. But, the state, state starts up, starts issuing applications in April first. If we don't have any bylaws, number of stores, state could issue any number of stores. So, we have, then the, the, the owners can put any, any places in with this, lined with the...
Put any places that zone for commercial use?
How much they'll use.
It's a, it's a legal commercial business, they can go in any place zone for commercial use.
I think, you know, this is better to talk to the, the KP and Law is the one. They had classes several times, and they strongly recommend, and all other municipalities are doing their bylaws. Who were, it's not just a use of the recreational marijuana, it's, it's again, you know, where we put this, where we establish the stores, and where we establish the infusions, infusions, making the cup, brownies, cupcakes, all those things. And where they put the stores, and how many stores. So, those are all comes under the bylaw regulations.
If, if we were to regulate this, we could also look to assign certain fees above and beyond the basics that the state calls for. I mean, there are impact fees that we can charge, you know, as well.
Application fees.
So, you know, there's that revenue portion of it as well, that we wouldn't be able to dictate as, as comprehensively unless we had our regulations in place.
So, I think it would make sense for the board to sign two members, to join the, two members of the planning board, two members from the ZBA.
It's, you know, Grafton, they, they already did the bylaws. So, Suesbury, the, the town meeting did, I think they are going to the town meeting, but Grafton, they did pass the, some of the bylaws.
A lot of towns are just voting that they're not allowed at all.
Yeah, but ours is, ours we are allowing recreational...
Well, I don't, I don't know, we can still look at that issue and bring it back to town meeting, 'cause as more information comes forward, I think these, they're giving us extra taxes because they know that it's gonna be extra work and extra cost for the town. They're not giving it just because they're nice people.
And also the growers.
They're giving it because it's gonna be, it's, it's gonna be, I mean, I don't know for sure, but it's gonna be the next big issue in this country or in this state. I mean, it already is in states that have it, they're having huge issues with it. So, I think, I mean, I'd be interested in being involved with those other groups and at least, at a minimum, have a bylaw that... Again, I don't think there'll be a lot that wanna come to West Boylston, but if a lot of towns around us all say no...
City of Worcester is allowing it. It's, if I'm opening up a recreational marijuana shop, I'm going to Worcester.
I hope, I hope that's the case.
Because I'm gonna get a lot more foot traffic and a lot more people in the city of Worcester than I am here.
Or do you go to a small town where people maybe have a little more money, and you can get, there's a lot more kids, and you can get Sterling, so I, I don't know the answer.
Well, the kids, you gotta be twenty-one, so there's, I mean, to say there's a lot more kids is, that's not even part of the discussion.
How are we going to regulate the growers, you know?
Before we, this, this, get to, Chris would say you would wanna follow up on the board, and Raj?
Yes, I do.
All right, so, those, you wanna?
Okay.
You too?
Yes, I will.
So, you need a motion for that?
If you wanna make a motion.
I'll make a motion to assign Raj and Chris as the liaison to develop a medical marijuana bylaw.
Recreational marijuana.
Correct, correction, recreational marijuana bylaw.
All in favor?
Aye. I think there's a guy in there.
Dave?
I was at a conference on Saturday in Holy Cross, and I helped me speak with a gentleman who was on the planning board that had not been drafted, and gave me his business card. And like Raj said, they've already passed it, it's gone to the AG, we're just waiting back. He told, and I told him what we're trying to do, and he said that if we need any help, he would be more than happy to come and speak to us and, you know, explain what they do, so, we have someone that we could call and talk to.
Your committee will meet, and you'll get back to us, and that's not what you come up with.
It's a, it's a, like, a, you know, three or four bylaws we may need.
All right, invoices, CBA invoice number fifty-seven-one-seven for the senior center for seventeen thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars.
Formed.
Wait, did we, did the FISB, didn't we table these at the FISB?
No, this is for, that was for the police station. Have we talked about?
There were two invoices, the last FISB meeting, there were two invoices we didn't have, you weren't there either, Nancy, were you? There were two invoices that we did not have backup on.
Oh, you're right, you know, John did.
So...
John Millen said that he didn't have the information on it, so he did not bring it up in front of Chris.
Was it these?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, 'cause I don't know what these are for.
Let's put these off to the next meeting. All right. Concurrent appointment of the following police officers from the town of Boylston to work details at the rate of forty-three dollars an hour for a period covering April first, two thousand eighteen to June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Kimmetry Trobiani and Kenneth Jackson. Johnson, I'm sorry, where did you say, Jackson?
So, moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And kind of approving, I'm Margaret.
I would ask that, I believe we're passing over this.
Okay.
Recommend we pass over that tonight.
All right, meeting limitations, announcements, move, the move date for the counseling agent officers at Senior Center to the First Communal Church is targeted the week of April seventeenth. And then, future agenda items, anybody have anything? No, okay.
I do have a question for the town administrator. I do have several, different kind of people are talking about the incident happened at the student walkout. Do you have any more information, if you could share with us, as well as the town?
That was discussed at the PEG board meeting last night?
No, 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 I don't know about that.
Can we put down the future agenda?
I'm talking about the student walkout, yes, at the school.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know anything more than what I told you the other day, Raj. I know that there was concern about PEG equipment being taken away from the student.
No, I don't think, I don't think that's what he's asking.
In general.
I think it is, because I think it was something that was supposed to be...
Not, not only the PEG in, in general.
No, he's talking about the walk, this student walkout.
But, it's not, it's not the walkout that's the, that was the concern, it was what happened with the, the student that was at, you know, that was there. The student had asked permission to record the, the auditorium gathering that was scheduled.
Not, I'm, along with that, in, in general, what happened there?
I don't know anything more than what we already talked about, Raj.
So, if you're going to bring up the future agenda, we... So, if you'd like to bring that up for future agenda, we guess more patient would have the student, would he?
No, I, I think, I think he's asking for a school committee issue.
Yeah.
Not, not ours, but I have no problem if he wants to put it on a future agenda and you allow it, but I think it's...
I think that would certainly...
Something the school committee, we have...
No, I know that, you know, it does involve to the school committee, but as a town administrator, she might have known more information than what we know, what we know in the paper. That's what I'm asking.
I think the superintendent would be the person to ask about that.
All I know is that there was, one of our PEG employees, one of our productions assistants, had texted the PEG coordinator and asked if it was okay to record the, the, I can't think of the correct word, but the, the...
Assembly.
Assembly, thank you, that was scheduled before the walkout, and she had said that that sounded like a smart thing to do. I don't know whether that actually ended up happening or not, but I, I do know that the student then attempted to record, or at least I believe that he attempted to record the actual walkout itself, which was not even discussed with the PEG coordinator. And it somehow, the, the school took the PEG equipment from the student, and it's my understanding that there was a lot of Facebook back and forth about that. I did not see any of the Facebook postings, I don't know. The school ended up giving the equipment back to the PEG department, and that's all I know. I don't know any of the specifics of this at all.
Okay, thank you.
Shane, also select one or two points.
Yeah, I just, I just had the occasion, I mean, we, we'd never announced it at our meeting, but I know from talking to the town administrator that it was announced on, I saw it on Facebook, but it was a, it was a presentation by the regional board of health, the fire chief and the police chief, and it was teenage brain under construction. It was in regards to all these, it was at Wachusett. It was a very good turnout. It was very interesting in regards to drugs and all the things that we're talking about, marijuana and all the other things. So, I'd just like to thank the groups, the, the board of health, I believe. It was the regional board of health, the fire chief and the police chief for putting it on. I wish we had the opportunity to announce it at our meeting also, but there were a few residents that I saw there from West Boylston. It was last, last weekend. It was very interesting. I wish other board members maybe saw it and was able to go to it, but I'd like to thank them. Very good presentation.
The agenda items?
Most of the agenda?
On executive session.
Oh.
I move, yeah, I move to enter an executive session on the provision of Massachusetts General Bylaws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part 2, to discuss contract negotiations with a non-union personnel police chief.
Will not be coming back into open session.
Sure, we don't want to do some more stuff.
Aye. We have roll call.
That's a good question. I need it. I need it. If we agree to this, we need to come back in open session to...
Announce it or not?
Announce it.
Um, you're, you're not going to be signing it tonight, are you? You can do that at the next meeting, April 4th.
It's all right with the, the issue of the contract and everything. It's not expiring? When does it expire?
Um, it expires, um, hold on. Our next meeting is April 4th. It expires March 31st.
And we will be coming back into open session.
We will be coming back into open session.
Do we need a roll?
Yeah, we need roll.
Second. Yes.
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 Yes.